Okay, Mayor Manning.
Here.
Brennaman?
Here.
Keel?
Here.
Horn?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
And Manahan did say he would be arriving late.
Manahan, any additions to the agenda, otherwise I'll look for a motion to approve. Discussion? There's none. Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yeah.
Alright, next we'll look to approve minutes. Previous meeting, meetings, one from two six, 2018, another from two nine, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Regular?
Regular. Do you want to do them one at a time?
Maybe best.
Yep. Further to six.
Second by Brennaman. Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any close?
Upstain.
Upstain, okay. Alright. And do we have a motion to approve a special meeting minutes from two nine, 2018?
So.
Second motion? Second from Horn. And discussion? None? Bennett, Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Upstain.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Next, uh, we'll get bills submitted for approval. I'll make a motion to approve those for submitted for approval. Second. Horn and Nelson? In discussion.
What is sports complex grading, is that the land work or the site work?
Yeah. Yeah, and we took it out of the general fund, general fund like we agreed upon last meeting on the parks.
Any other discussion? There's none. Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
And Jones?
Yes.
Nothing on our ordinances or resolutions, and for the visitors, Captain Justin Kelson, discussion on fireworks sales within city limits. I believe you had some information on this, we looked at this, how many months ago Theresa?
Um, looks like, um, back last July, we talked about it a little bit, right after the last Fourth of July. We had a little bit of discussion of what our current ordinance is, which, right now, does not allow the sale of fireworks within city limits. So, um, we talked about, you know, possibly allowing that last year, didn't go any further. If we were to allow the sale of fireworks within city limits, we'd have to, um, you know, adapt an ordinance to allow that. That would mean then, um, whatever applicant came before the city, they'd also have to apply through the state to get one, and through the city, uh, in order to actually get a license to sell within the city. And that was, Justin Kelgen was interested in this topic, so he asked it to be placed on the agenda for the council to look at and discuss again.
Justin, what are you thinking about, uh, setting up here?
Couple different locations. Couple different locations, one would be, uh, somewhere adjacent to the software parking lot.
Okay.
Um, another would be, be, I'd have to talk to them, but a one idea spot would be the people who have the old, now old car lot, I think that would be a good location as well. The building or two that I was thinking of, you know, seeing that I was gonna reach out to them and see if they could lease that parking lot from the building for seven to fourteen days or whatever. Otherwise, normally I just rent a container from, uh, Mini Mobile that has, uh, it fits the specifications required by law to work as a mobile stand, and then it's secured and everything, so I would just put that down in the lot and then.
Have you been selling, uh, fireworks in Humboldt for how long?
I think this is our sixth or seventh year.
Yeah.
Experience, I mean, as far as, uh, I know nothing about fireworks as far as sales and stuff like that, I mean, uh, can you kind of share with us roughly, don't have to be exact of course, um, how much tax revenue this might generate?
So, I mean, on a, on an average year, I mean, it fluctuates depending on what year the fourth falls in, but for our growth sales, I mean, where we see anywhere, we've gone up to sixty thousand in seven days, and on, on average, looking at thirty to thirty-five thousand. And that's in Humboldt, so I could only imagine that the revenue would be better closer this way with a higher population, so. Currently, I mean, there is no choice here, so if they're not driving to Humboldt, that means they're driving to Sioux Falls.
So the questions I have, gentlemen?
It, and Theresa, last time we discussed it, we didn't go as far as having a draft up, a proposed resolution for that, or make changes to what we have out there.
No, we didn't get that far, and so we, I gave you the information that's in your packet now, then we kind of just discussed a little bit. We wanted to know what other cities, you know, currently did, and you have that information before you, that's part four.
What are Humboldt's restrictions?
They don't have any. They don't have any, no. Then, yeah, Humboldt has no restrictions, and we've done in Chester, Marion, and Lake Vermillion as well.
Whoever the seller may be, I mean, they've got to follow, the state does have some restrictions, and I put in my comments about, you know, license requirements, fees, and the age of the sellers and whatnot, that's all, you know, oversupped by the, the state, I guess, those are the restrictions. And the city can be more restricted if we want to, we don't have to.
Sure.
And ultimately, we have, let our future, or, I mean, we can decide.
Yeah, every applicant, you know, if we do change our ordinance to allow it, every applicant would still have to come before the city council to get a license, they'd have to apply for it.
Let me specifically ordinance five zero four zero zero two. I mean, would, would, would that specific section have to be changed per se, or just create a new ordinance as a whole?
We create a new ordinance, ordinance to amend it.
I'm making a motion to, uh, uh, Legal's gotta do this, right? Legal would have to do it, or you can do it?
Every ordinance I draft, I have, let her review, so.
Okay, okay, for Theresa to, uh, draft, uh, an ordinance to allow fireworks within city limits. Fireworks sales within city limits.
Second by Keel. Okay, more discussion?
Would this be, these would be treated similar to liquor licenses, we need to limit how many? We want to have a better draw, ten stands, twenty stands, one, two, five?
Good point.
Just a thought?
No, I need to get a discussion, I mean, you don't really want them all over the place either.
I mean, the example I think of is last year, I think Iowa made it legal.
Yes.
Yep. I have been dragged down to Okavango, about the same time.
Bet you was crazy.
There was one about every three hundred foot, I felt like. You know, and I don't know if that's necessarily what we want, but, uh, that's an extreme, because a lot of Cajuners don't get it wrong, but still, in about every town, you see a bunch of them. And then also some insight would be good is, why haven't we allowed it in the past?
This ordinance has been in place since I've been here, I guess, I don't know the background of why it wasn't allowed in the past, I don't know if it's, it hasn't been discussed since I've been here allowing it, I don't know. In your tenure, it's been discussed.
It's never been brought up in twenty-some years.
Yeah.
Happy Riders was the last one, and whenever, whenever that was, and then they left, I mean, they went up to Browners and sold out there for quite a few years.
Yeah.
Sure.
So, I mean, it hasn't been that long ago. Fifteen years, ten. Sales taxes, sales taxes, I don't kind of surprise me when you say that much over Humboldt. And I spent five hundred bucks with three, four kids, and there's a lot of people who spend a lot more than that.
So was Happy Riders, was that technically out of city limits then?
They went.
Yeah, the timer, yeah.
They went up to Browners after they left here.
When you say here, I'm trying to think where they were set up at.
Tam, Tammons.
Not across from Tammons.
Was that time, was that?
That would have been in the county.
Exactly, that's my, that's my point, when we say, well, we had Handy Riders, really, the city didn't have anybody selling fireworks.
No, that would have been county too.
But it technically was.
They're on Melford's property, so Melford's property might have been in our, in our city.
I don't think it was at that time, Jerry.
I, I don't know.
As far as I can go with this.
We did have a little pushback last year after fourth, uh, Cindy Blass game, remember? That was more.
I mean, used in portion of it.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Not so much on the sale, but that was more on the.
I guess I'm willing to look at it and.
Yeah. I think it's, and explore those options.
So Theresa, if, if, um, if you rewrite this, or the ordinance, um.
Or create a new one, basically.
Create a new one, right, I mean, um, I don't, I don't want to amend my motion per se, if at all possible, um, but, uh, is this something that would be reviewed on an annual basis? Probably not, obviously, if, if, if it's a ordinance written, it'd be one and all, right?
Perpetual.
I think you put in ordinance until somebody, some council wants to change it and write something else.
Or unless I amend my motion and make it contingent on one-year, uh, application and review again in 2019, would that make sense to you? What would make sense to you?
I, I don't think that would be in the ordinance, we could probably have that in the application, because we'll have to make an application, you know, a form they're gonna have to come fill out, and just, I want to do this, and on the form, we could say, you know, only grant it until December thirty-first, so for one year, something like that, we could probably work that right into the form.
We sell, uh, once a year, we've, we've done the twice-a-year thing, uh, it just isn't profitable though for us, I mean, the market's not there to, to open up for, for Christmas or New Years. I, I know that, of all the places we've been, we've never had to actually apply an application with the city before, usually it's the state, and the state sends you all the stuff, and then they, uh, what, so, you know, it's gotta be something new, but.
Cool.
Okay, so we're okay with the way it is?
I think so, I'll draft something, and you guys can review it, and, you know, we, it can always be changed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and we just get a draft to review.
We'll stay with it.
Alright, so we got a motion, and second on that, and even more discussion.
One question.
Yep.
Is there anything, so we have an ordinance that says you cannot sell?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, basically, um, five point oh four oh two says, this is prohibited, use, throwing, lighting, firing, display, or sell of fireworks. And then the next one says, but you can use them during, you know, Fourth of July, yep, so we do.
Thank you.
Alright. Anything else?
Hear a motion again?
Yeah, you want to hear a motion again?
Yep, motion is made by Nelson to have the city administrator draft an ordinance to allow fireworks sales within city limits, second by Keel.
Alright. Jones?
I'll say yes.
Yep. Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief Shunak here, does fire department report?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good morning, chief.
Uh, recap of January, January, uh, we had seventeen total calls for the month, ten of them in Hartford. January training, we had all our members, uh, retrain on CPR, our Lucas machine, that's our automated, uh, chest compression machine, and our automated, uh, defibrillators. Uh, February upcoming, uh, EMS training, which was actually last night, we trained on special, special needs patients, uh, particularly pediatric and elderly patients. We went over quality assurance, quality improvement, uh, for our care, uh, we also covered HIPAA, uh, reporting requirements, and our confidentiality, confidentiality requirements, uh, coming off our calls. And we also had a training on LVAD patients, and what an LVAD patient is, essentially, they have a pump installed in their heart, where they truly don't have a heartbeat, they have electric motor pumping blood around in their body, which is, uh, rather unique, you won't get a blood pressure, you won't get a pulse, but they'll be sitting there talking to you. And we do have that type of patient in Hartford, so. Uh, fire training coming up next week, uh, we're gonna have some basic skills sessions, uh, we'll be going over, uh, structural search, uh, ladders, and ropes and knots. Any questions for me? Yeah, I'll put you on the spot right away. You bet. What, uh, what do you think about fireworks stand in Hartford? I think as long as they're reading, uh, state guidelines, proper setbacks, uh, I think there should be nothing wrong with it. True. Sorry to put you on the spot as well, too, you know. Might as well get the.
This Hartford might not be for just a minute there.
Yeah. Thanks, chief. Alright, thank you.
Got two computers with network issues right now, I need to bolt them.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could get your packet to come up.
You can, why?
Get my computer to come up.
Cause I, I've got the.
I'm on.
We had some love base to our fiber, and now we have two wireless connections, try the other one next time.
Five G, I'll start right now.
Oh.
I did that with Craig's, and I've seen it work.
I was close to having it figured out.
Come on, Craig.
I figured it out.
I was close.
Well, who else doesn't have?
Do you, do you have a network key not touch your head? Did you add a download picture?
They ran, they brought the paper. I think it's because we're in Florida.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, okay. Go ahead, Jesse, for the chamber, if I'm filling in for you.
Your packet is very important for January, uh, some quick highlights here, we had the chamber have its first lunch table coffee, well, since I've been here anyways. I thought you were ready third, we had about thirty people in attendance, Senator Peters, Representative Steinhaus, Representative Clark, we're gonna take questions from the audience, and have discussion, if you can, Councilman Jones will be in there, appreciate it.
Yeah, I was hoping you'd, somebody throw me a bone.
We had a very pretty for the goat, they, uh, did some remodels, and they had a grand reopening that weekend, I think it was the January nineteenth weekend. Uh, worked on scheduling events for the chamber for the first half of the year, pretty much scheduled up to August at this point, which is nice to have a good foundation in place going forward, versus years past, where it's been cut by the fly, the seizure hands type of thing, and, and we had, uh, or actually had a membership benefits luncheon today, we talked about the chamber and the events for the year, and kind of how, uh, benefits can be used by the membership of the chamber. HADC, we had some work on Project Artemis, which was put on hold indefinitely, as far as I know, uh, we finished, we finalized the daycare RFP. Uh, KDOT came out here, interviewed Project Church Daycare, and myself about the story, and some of the needs for daycare in the area. We had a few companies express interest in Hartford, a few different parties, um, one, there's some folks that live in town that want to move some office space here. Um, I followed up with them, and they haven't made any decisions, if they've communicated with me at this point. On the horizon, uh, we have, we first have Chairman Cindy Hybridge with Minnehaw County Commission here on Thursday morning for coffee, which she is gonna be here to define, uh, behalf of the county for a bill, so she will not be there, it's been postponed, um, at this point. We're gonna be cutting in February twenty-eighth for Brad Hannish with Maristar Realty. We have a seminar for, uh, March for the chamber on cybersecurity, it's March sixth, at Pizza Ranch, and lunch will be provided for chamber members. Um, March ninth, we have the HADC planning retreat, that'll start at eight AM at the Castello Community Room with Deer Hollow Apartments. We would very much appreciate having a delegation from the city council there, and, and yourself, Mr. Mayor, too, if you can spend a few hours with us at least, just kind of talk about planning in Hartford, developments, and then the RFPs will be reviewing at that time as well. And then, um, the March membership mixers are gonna be at Super Valley Great Life on March twenty-second, in the chamber. Um, that's it for my part one of my report, any questions on that? Okay, this on the sheet in front of you, I didn't make it in my report, um, this kind of, this is a discussion about being a bit more assertive in twenty eighteen, direct economic development, and so I put together just some ideas that I've been working on in my head, brainstorming, and talking to other folks about, um, if you have a chance to review this at your, at your, at your own, own pace, wasn't sure, I want to put this in there, we're not tonight, but we've kind of talked about it a little bit with somebody else, and that'd be a good move for you to review, so you just know that I'm thinking creatively, and do have ideas in place, whether or not we implement some, all, any, will be up maybe for further discussion, unless there's anything I want to talk about immediately.
We got a lot of detail in here, and it's, uh, it's good, are you gonna be, are some of these things that you've got for goals for two thousand and eighteen, are they gonna be covered at the retreat as well?
Number one, we covered extensively, um, I want to kind of maybe look at restructuring the HADC, and finding some ways to, um, empower volunteers to go out there, help economic development take place. Um, number two is working with, you know, a media company, or a marketing company that I've, I've had an initial meeting with, so I will be, we'll be bringing, bringing a proposal to either this body, or to yourself, Mayor First, to kind of review about what that might look like, we've had some discussions, city councilman and I, in different settings, about how we need to be maybe a little bit more aggressive and targeted, um, hitting Sioux Falls businesses, and kind of bringing awareness to what's happening out here, I think there's a lot of potential for Sioux Falls businesses to be, um, investing into Hartford and seeing a very positive return on that investment.
You gone over these, uh, these goals with the HADC board?
These are, these are my goals.
And your goals?
Yeah. These are what I like to see, I mean, there's kind of a mixture of both, like, well, most of these are my, my priorities, or some of them, not all, there's some other ones that they're quite included here, but, I think first and foremost, it's gonna be important that we're working with developers to make sure that improvements are taking place now, and Nicholson, Ron, Dan, we're having great examples of things we can be very aggressive about. There should be a lot of return on those investments that we made into the city.
I have to jump around, can you tell me again the date of, uh, the retreat?
Friday, March ninth, eight AM, excuse me, at the Castello Community Room at Deer Hollow Apartments.
One thing I don't see in your report, and I found out today, and maybe it's too early to say, but, but, uh, it, uh, seems advantageous, uh, that you touched on some of the things going on. Been a young man, and I can't remember his name, from Chiro Sports today.
Yep.
Uh, can you expand on that a little bit, please?
Yeah, I sent an email out to the, out to the council a few weeks ago, that Chiro Sport, um, a chiropractor will be opening a new shop in Hartford. Uh, their first location was in Brandon, I believe, followed by a second location on, in, in southern Sioux Falls, the third location's in Del Raffens, and their fourth would be in Hartford, at the Vista Crossing apartment building on seven hundred North Anamark Avenue, and so Dr. Joel Martins is gonna be the chiropractor, he's a recent graduate from chiropractic school, he's a recent graduate from his program. Um, moved to Hartford, I think, last week, and helped to open shop, uh, mid to late March. They shoot for March first, but I think there's still a lot of work that needs to be done in this space, I think, if we move back a few weeks. So he, and he specializes in more of those sports and rehab and stuff like that, and so he looks to be working, intent to leave with the school, he's a Tri Valley grad, and so he does have first in the area as well.
Maybe a tail off topic, but, but, you know, um, what role did, did the city or you have in that recruitment?
Yeah, uh, so Dr. Joel, and Dr. Ross, Dr. Ross founded, uh, sponsored Chiro Sports, he reached out to me, gosh, must have been maybe November, December, I think, I can't remember exactly, must have been November, I think it was November, and he set up a meeting with me to go over Hartford, to talk about, um, the demographics, information, about town, potential retail space would be a good fit for him, and so we had about a thirty-minute meeting, Dr. Joel, Dr. Ross, and I went over stuff, gave him the community guide, gave them some demographic information that I'd printed out, then emailed them, and then from there, they went and did some tours, and worked with, uh, Justin and I at Vista Crossing to, um, formulate a lease agreement there. And so, the information that we provided on behalf of the city was, I mean, instrumental, and Dr. Ross emailed Theresa and Mayor Manning about that, I believe, and said that, you know, it was, information was helpful.
Yeah.
And so our, our, uh, HADC, through, I used to, the city of Hartford through membership with the Minnehaw County Economic Development Association, has access to a software program called Locational Information Systems, LOUS for short. So to go onto the Hartford's, Hartford Chambers website, harperdscchamber.org/land, that'll send you to our version of LOUS, which has all the buildings that are for lease or sale in town, or most of them, and then all the land that I know of that's for sale in town, on there. And then to that, you can also print out reports, demographic information, demographic information about Hartford, be it five G projections, one, three, five, seven, ten mile radius rings around Hartford, there's a lot, there's an extensive amount, list of items that you can, that you can use, that you can print out information on, that anybody can, not just me, but anybody that accesses that website.
Well done, good job.
Thank you. Thank you. And so, you know, back to this document, just, I mean, I'll take some time to review, and look over, and anything that jumps out to you, that you think might be a good fit for Hartford, I think it's important to focus on a lot of, either quality of life stuff, or industrial development. Either one of the two, or a mixture of both.
Are we telling sales free now?
RFP or?
Oh, not yet, no, no, this, this is back, sorry, this document I put on your, on your desk.
Okay, okay, yeah. No, I think that's good, Jesse, and I think it shows that, you know, thinking proactively and not reactive, you know, just really starting to, even if there's eleven things on here, um, even half of them would be a huge, huge step in the right direction.
Right.
So I'm not trying to set the bar low on that, I'm just saying that it's good to have all of those on your list, so that we can move in one way or the other, so.
Absolutely.
On your report, it says, took a phone call from a company entrusted in buying office space in Hartford.
Yes.
My question is, um, what is our available office space in Hartford, how many square feet do we have available, um, kind of price per square foot, do we have those numbers?
I don't know those numbers personally, but I have, they don't, oh, I, I need to back, I have some of the information, but not all, some parties don't want to share the information with me, I guess they want to be able to have those communications with the person themselves, versus seeing the price tag and stopping at there, and there's always, there's a chance that negotiation can take place, and that those numbers can change. And so for office space, it kind of depends on the use, in the Hartford Professional Center, and for example, they are a little bit more choosy on who, on who takes that space there, they want to complement the existing tenants. Hartford Plaza, I think, would, would be pretty much open to anybody for business, and then Vista Crossing, uh, Justin has two small offices for lease right now, when, when everything will be built out. And so I, I have the prices on those two offices, and then I have the price on the op, on the middle suite, uh, the exit, three eighty-seven plaza is owned by the Grow Cats. So that's pretty much, pretty much it for office space in town, um, office space did just open up, and building north of us, owned by Michelle Thompson, a lot of women have been officeing out of there, but she's now moved into Sioux Falls, office there instead, so her suite's available, I had the price on that as well.
Is that one being leased out at the time?
Which one?
Is that Michelle, and, and it's a little off topic, is that Michelle's building, or was she leasing that?
Michelle owns the building, so she leases it out to people.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a compartment in there, bathroom, I want to say these are the American Legion auxiliary. Yeah, so there's a there's a compartment in there, bathroom, I want to say these are the American Legion auxiliary, Chapter of South Dakota has an office there. And then there's the middle spaces for for lease right now.
All right, any other questions on on this part of it? Okay, now we'll move on to discussing the city lots along South Street. All right, so if I understand correctly, Jesse, you wanted to start talking with the council a little bit about some of those lots that are out there, especially the ones that. Um, could be used for daycare depending on on how the RP process goes. Which is coming up on March first, the deadline for application for that.
Yes.
Some of that land there has um, isn't, well, I think all of it is in a floodplain of some sort or another, right?
I think so, and I might have used the wrong wording in my, I apologize if I did, I'm not an expert on these things as much. But uh I think it'd be helpful if there was a way to find, bring it out of, which, what does it need to be brought out of?
Well, you can fill in the floodplain, which is the dark blue and then purple.
Gotcha.
The floodway is where you camp.
Gotcha, that's what it is. So I think I think you did use the terminology there, uh, I I really think that. This means surprise receive two proposals, we still have what, ten days, eight days left? I I'd be surprised if we didn't receive at least three to four more, yeah, I've I've had what, ten con- ten contacts with different parties. Um, many from out of, many from out of town, and I know there's several big ones for that. Regardless of what happens, I think it would be helpful for, one, the city, and two, whoever is the winning bid. To have these lots taken and out of that area, I think which would really speed up development, but to take a. To take a roadblock away from the whole process.
So give us some background, any thoughts on that as far as timing, at this point, we don't know. They need one lot, two lots, four lots, sort of things like that. Um, and what uh what your thought process is behind? What can be done, where, you know, do we have that dirt somewhere else, can can we start that process, or are you, what's your thought process?
Yeah, my thought process, I think it might be in the city's best interest, from my perspective, to bring out six out of that classification. Regardless of the fact that maybe only two or three or four are needed, if you wanted to see any sort of. Activity on the on the other lots, they would need to be brought out of that eventually. And so let's just say only four of the lots would use for daycare and two are available for commercial activity. And we have a page to the city to bring those out and make them more attractive for development, which would then read to your return on it. And then form a property tax and hopefully some sort of sales tax revenue as well. And so at this point, I don't know if the city has any dirt that could be used for that, I I I don't think so, and Craig is that correct?
Yeah, we don't know.
I think at this point, um, I think. It would. Speed things up, so for the daycare process itself, it's an extensive process. It's almost, it's ridiculous how long it takes for a daycare, urgent daycare to be. Due from complete, from beginning to completion through other regulations and the different state requirements that need to take place. Um, I don't want to know all about it because it's such a complex process, uh, but it requires multiple state departments working together. Um, and the city. For even that first day to even take place, so. Let's just say it would, I'd take months, even if even the initial plan is to be approved by the state. And so this whole, all this whole process is taking place for at least making moves for the land to be ready to go immediately upon approval from the state. And it would, it would help speed this process along versus what it may be a couple of years.
Sure.
Possibly.
Sure. Mitch and Craig, you guys have reviewed this and have any thoughts as to what it would take to get that?
Um, yeah, as far as improvements, you just have to fill in those lots to get above the floodplain, you have to do a. A certificate, an elevation certificate to show that you've built out of the floodplain, raised it high enough. Um, and where did dirt come from, dirt come from, I don't know.
Yeah, we will occasionally get contractors that'll, they can have basement dug out, and they got all the extra dirt, and they're trying to get rid of it, trying to find a spot for it, so. We'll occasionally find dirt available for free, basically, just to get rid of it, so.
How much dirt are we going to need here?
Yeah, I don't, I can't, I don't know how wholesome it is, I guess, but.
Well, I mean, is a basement going to cover it or a couple basements?
I don't know.
Do you think it'd take a lot more?
I think more than that would be more than that.
More than that. Or riprap, I mean, are you, I mean, requirements, uh.
Uh, there won't be any riprap requirements, the only, the only requirement is that you keep the fill out of the floodplain.
Okay.
That's true.
Yeah, there you go.
I th- I thought about that too with Nicholson, but I think we're going to be using all that dirt out there. I mean, if we had, if we had some extra dirt, this would be a good ideal location for it, but I don't, I'm usually short of dirt right now, with what it's trending right now.
Have you guys ever shot this once, the elevation now, and what it need to be to get out of there, you know what that is?
Uh, I don't know what that is, I think.
Mont- Monty had was looking at, when we shot that, it needed about five feet on the back. Forty-five feet.
Okay.
He was looking at five grand just for that one lot.
Five feet on the back, forty-five feet of the lot? Yeah. It might need more than a basement.
Is it, if I'm, if I'm hearing this right, too.
Yeah.
You only need to be out of the floodplain for the structure, right, so. I mean, ideally, you may be, do you have to, you don't have to get the entire lot out of the floodplain to get a building permit for that lot, is that right?
Yeah, for media issued building permit, at least the structure has to be to the base flood elevation. Now, technically, the lot still is in a floodplain, so they may have require flood insurance. But they can build there as long as the lowest level of the structure is above that base flood elevation. Depending what you build and where you build it. You know, depends on how much value you need to bring in, it's kind of hard to do it on the forefront.
Might be something we could even re do these lots to make them shorter, maybe. Give one of them so you only got four lots or three lots, make them wider and shorter, so you can get them out of that floodway, too.
Do, is any of the preliminary or any of the engineering on grading up at the sports complex, is that?
We're gonna prob, we're gonna need all that dirt up there, too.
That'll be mostly black dirt up there, too, so you're gonna want to keep that up there, you're gonna want some pretty good clays and stuff, as much as you can to fulfill in here. Like, so we turned some down last year because I didn't have place to put it, so.
Yeah, I can't think of any projects that we're doing that we could bring dirt in from, but I know, didn't Jardings bring, where'd they get their dirt from?
They were letting it go.
No, they won't let anymore of the world there.
Were they hauling two Jarding or away from Jarding this summer?
They're hauling two this year.
Two. And where were they bringing that from?
Coffee cup.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I guess the way I see it, too, though, is that we've got, what is it, six lots, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, six. Pretty valuable lots over there, and. I think it's worth looking at, I mean, we're we're in the middle of an RFP process. We have six valuable lots that are in a good spot of town. When are we gonna, when are we gonna do that, right, when are we gonna spend that money to make them better lots, or are we gonna turn that cost over to the person we sell it to? So, I mean, I, if, I'm just curious if we have some preliminary engineering on hand, or you can get a, just get a rough idea of, yep, it's going to take this many. Whatever you do, cubic yards of fill, and roughly, it's going to cost us.
Yep, we can figure that out for you.
Twenty thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand, you know.
I'd gladly take any dirt that we can, I mean, people, et cetera, throughout the year, asking us if we can give us some dirt for me, I'd want to have everything staked well, so we're not getting anywhere.
Craig, you have to put you on the spot too much, but you said you had a contractor last year that was looking for a place to put some dirt and turn it down. My memory serves me correctly, we wanted to fill some low spot in up at the sports complex for a shed.
This is clay, though, well, I guess, yeah, it could use there, but from what, never really got any commitment on what was going to go up there, or where it's going to go, or I didn't want to stockpile it, so.
I mean, do we? Seems like we may have missed an opportunity there, do we as a council want to, how do we want to proceed, we don't want that to happen again, in my opinion?
Right, we definitely want it, definitely want it somewhere, right?
For sure.
Would it do you any good just to dump dirt there?
No.
No.
On these six lots, you're talking, on these six lots or anywhere, what are you, what are you saying?
If you don't lay it in there and pack it in there, it isn't going to do the person any good.
I agree.
They have to have action. I think, you know, we're gonna just push in five foot dirt and then think that they're ready to go, because then you don't have compaction.
But if we're turning down dirt that could be dumped in at the sports complex. We shouldn't, we shouldn't set that precedent either.
Today, today's world and stuff, there's people who are wanting dirt, buying dirt.
That's why when Craig said that, my ears really perked up. You know.
What's the protocol of what Craig said about shortening the lots a little bit, I'm looking at two lots that are free, two oh nine and two oh five. Uh, protocol through P and Z, I assume, and or what what uh, what would need to be done to shorten them up, what looks like about a maximum of ten feet?
Well, first of all, I just have to see how much of our footage was there, because you can't shorten up too much and make them too small lots, because then they won't be buildable lots.
I agree.
And depending on what you put in there, I mean, you gotta meet setbacks, you gotta keep them big enough. If you do, you know, figure that out and you do shorten them up some, basically, engineers would have to draft a plat for it and we'd have to get it approved by the. Board of directors.
What's it take, Mitch?
To what?
Tell us what we need to get out of the floodplain, is that what we're going?
Yeah, we just gotta go.
Going back and forth.
We just gotta, we just gotta go do a survey and.
What's that cost?
I would say it'd probably be under five grand for us to go out there and do a short little grading plan.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I'm at the point where, given your synopsis of how long it takes to get a daycare going. If the RFP that that we decide to move forward with has written into it some provision about getting some of those lots out of the floodplain. And we have a preliminary cost, that's what that would cost from from Saco, I think that's when we really look forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can speculate all night long.
Right.
Let's move on.
I think you need to.
You need some answers to that?
I think so.
I think Mitch will just give direction to.
Right now.
What direction to do that, yep?
Jesse, do you, do you feel confident, I mean, you feel like it's going to affect the RFP process or any of that?
That, I mean, the one thing that we probably made, I did, I shouldn't say we, but I made a mistake, and then it included the information on the RFP that they're, that they are in a different zone right now. And so I would, I would feel comfortable with it, at least have the information on hand and sort of take, get it out, so they can use it as a bargaining tool as well. As we start this, getting them more serious in that process.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any more questions about this as well, this document, I'd be happy to talk about that stuff, give me a call.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks, Jesse. Can we move on to Mitch with the city's report?
Uh, nothing major new to report on these projects, we're still working on Swenson Park grading plan, Mickelson Road project, making progress on the ways to. Mike Frank and Trail, we're still waiting for things to thaw, finish that project up. We've had some work on the force account, some work on design standards, technical specification updates, CIP updates. Uh, been reviewing the plans for the map landing, concept plan, and exhibits for Second Street right away vacation.
I have some questions uh over the weekend in regards to, well, relates to Mickelson Road.
Okay.
And bear with me, because I don't know the timeline on, but at some point in time, that road, I assume, is going to be shut down.
Yes.
Okay, roughly, an idea, an idea when and how long?
Well, it's going to be shut down all summer.
Okay.
What we're going to do, we're planning on a temporary access on there for the the neighbors that live out there. Um, you know, once we get a bid, that work will probably start towards the end of May, I would guess.
Okay.
Um, so I'd say May all the way through, probably till September, October, they will be closed. Now, they, as they, as the phasing works out, there's going to be portions that'll open up, you know, before then, but. Um, generally speaking, I'd say that they should expect to be closed in the summer.
Okay, there's just a reason why I asked this, and I may ask for another agenda item for the next meeting. Um, I assume that a lot of that diverted traffic outside of coming back in on exit three and seven, some of it might end up down Row Road, don't you think?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Theresa, I'd like to request um, uh, for the next meeting, um, an additional application for Magwater to Railroad Street. For that reason. Craig, if you could possibly give me a number?
Yep, I'll get some numbers together.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I, and it is, just to expand on that real quick, sorry, I know I'm off topic here a little bit, but um. Projected first application, beginning of June, somewhere in that neighborhood?
End of May first, part of June, yeah.
Okay.
Depends on the weather, yeah.
Your advice on when a good time, given then what Mitch just said, would be for a second application, early August?
Yeah, I'd say probably early August, maybe a little mid to August, but I'd basically, I'd um just keep an eye on what it's doing and.
Yeah, and it's contingent on, I don't know if you need to do that, uh, you know, how dry it is, I mean, obviously, it was like last summer, we're fine.
Yeah, but if we get some moisture throughout this summer, that stuff will hold in pretty well.
I want to make sure we have that in place, you know, we know, and if suddenly it's an issue, we can move on it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. But then, Mitch, I apologize.
The guy we work with, too, that when we have him to pass, he's always said, just call him.
I remember you saying, that's why I figured it's a good time to bring it up now.
Um, any chance the bid letting is going to be earlier than April?
We're trying as as much as we can to move that up. Um, but it's, it's, it's.
Quit dancing, Mitch, I need some answers, we want to nail you down.
Yeah, I know, it's April.
Is that gonna, is that gonna hurt us, I mean, would we be better off saying to you, spend twenty thousand in overtime to get our bid package ready so we can get a bid earlier?
No, I, we did a number of projects this summer, I guess, and there's been some big utility jobs, the, talking to contractors, they're still, they're. Still looking for work, so I don't see it being a huge issue, I mean, obviously, our best bid times are from, you know, January to March, that's your ideal bidding season. Um, but it still seems like there's a lot of contractors that are only out there. There's a lot of interest on this project, so.
We didn't get bumped down the list, did we, from some other big project, huh? Like, come on.
No, we, no, we don't bump, we don't bump any.
Mitch, come on. Start.
Arden's Mickelson Club.
When will this Swenson uh Park Sports Complex, when will that be ready to bid?
I'd say we'll have our plans done back towards the end of March, and then we'll get them to the city staff and the community to review and take a look at them before we take them to bid. It's going to be close then, I'm going to go there, too.
I still didn't hear exactly what I was looking for there, but.
I don't think you're going to, I don't think we're going to.
Like, oh, April.
What's that?
April, then, you're saying?
Yeah, we're going to need to do that job, yeah.
Uh, Second Street Valley Vacation, I. Think to call and ask about that. What's that?
I have in my report, but basically, it couldn't be an agenda item coming up. I can just update you now if you want, um. Grabbing Saco's, go through our maps, and as we're looking at them, we have a portion of Second Street, and it's right on the south end of the park that, um. You know how the park, it kind of curves around there, and there's a gazebo that comes out, well, Second Street used to go straight, and when maybe did Second Street and made that bump out. Um, the roadway in there was never vacated, so, I mean, it's covered with dirt and it's part of the park area, but it's. It's just a technicality, we just need to vacate that right away, so I need an exhibit from Mitch so I can go ahead and do the petition.
All right. Thanks, Mitch.
Yep.
Thanks, Mitch.
Yeah.
Public works.
I'm just gonna hit on some updates or changes and that stuff, uh, for sooner the main lift station, we need to get the parts. for sewer, the main lift station, we need to get the parts welded up, uh, they got them done on Monday, but we didn't work, we think they had snow. So tomorrow we'll be getting those picked up, uh, first thing in the morning to have that pump back up and running by noon, so we'll have all three pumps up, and then, yeah, just wait for the rest of the parts to come in, and we'll switch it out after that, rebuild it, uh, with all the parts, so. So that's with that, um, the only other thing that I was gonna add, besides the slurry, or slurry seal coming up, um, is I've been talking to Travis with DOT, Travis Dressen. Um, DOT's looking at doing some turning lanes on, on Highway thirty eight in the Hartford area here. Um, one of them that they've been looking at is down like Holton Road and Railroad. And then, um, been talking to him with, uh, about Mickelson Road, they wanna add that in there too right away. And then he sent me out a email today, and it's to do with Assam's property down further, what their timeframe is for that, whether they try to add that in too. Um, then also we're looking at Second Street and Highway thirty eight to do something there by that school, because that's a bad intersection to begin with. So they added that one to it. Originally, they were just gonna do the Cold Road and Railroad, and I brought these other ones to them, so. So we'll be putting something together, this isn't gonna happen, I think he, date he's kinda thinking is about twenty twenty-three, so five years out yet on that. Um, but that is something that they're looking at, taking care of and getting done. Now, the only other thing that I had on mine is, uh, slurry seal. Um, when I put the budget number together, we had ninety thousand in budget for slurry seal for this year. Uh, numbers came in pretty good, um, uh, Missouri Petroleum was a little bid, and that's like I said, with Sioux Falls, uh, Brandon, us, um, Parker, Crooks, I think are the ones that are all involved in it. Um, and then figuring out the engineering fees and that stuff, we're gonna be below budget, and one road that we've, I've been kinda leaving out is, uh, Munt Street from Fourth up to Highway thirty, we haven't done anything with that yet, that'd be the only road in town that hasn't been done, and we've been leaving that. Because we're possibly thinking about tearing it up and doing a sewer rebuild on that. But with all these other big projects we got coming up, Mickelson Road, possibly Vandemark, I think we can keep the road together good enough, at least for a few years, if we just, uh, would slurry seal that at this time. Um, it's gonna shoot me over budget by about four thousand dollars if I had that in there. Um, we can do it, I talked to the contractor, he said they'll just do an add-on for quantities, so it won't be any other expenses that way, so. So it's something I'd like to bring into it, so, I guess we and with the numbers, it all goes by square yards, mobilization's already locked in, Sioux Falls eats like about ninety percent of that, and the rest of us small towns break up the other ten percent. Um, but I'd like to get a motion to accept, um, Missouri Petroleum's bid, um, for slurry seal. And then I'd like to be able to have a motion, I guess, too, to add Munt in on it. I don't wanna do dollar mount, because the majority of it's all by square yards, it could fluctuate two, four hundred yards, five hundred yards, just by measuring difference, um, their stuff's all computerized. So when they get it all patterned out, it's when they put a yard of material down, it's a yard of material, Theresa, you know, where we're out there with a roller wheel, trying to square up the yards that way, so our numbers are really close, they've been, you know, within a few hundred yards in the past, but I just, we just see, instead of a dollar mount down, I'd just like to see a motion to accept their bid and then with, uh, add Munt Street.
So with, roughly speaking, highlight, roughly speaking, uh, with Munt, it'd be roughly ninety-four thousand dollars.
Yep, yep, so I figured out that chunk is about six thousand yards that I gotta add, so it's right around that, um, it was two dollars and six cents, I believe, a square yard, and the original bid came in at seventy-seven, eight, eighteen, oh, one. Figuring engineer costs for doing the documents, that stuff that we send into Sioux Falls, and then any finish up work, we're maybe looking at twenty-eight hundred. And then, um, I'm looking at about a little over twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for the, um, total for that, and then, uh, that's twelve thousand's adding Munt, so the total's just a little, right around ninety-three thousand, so I figured probably ninety-four is gonna be safe, so. But like I said, I just do not see a dollar mount on it, because I don't, it's gonna change from the yard, I mean, unless you wanna cap it at ninety-four or something like that.
And what you're saying is this'll up, prolong the life over there, so that.
I, I believe we can save, we did the same thing with, um, uh, Ironwood, that was getting in really bad shape here, we did that a couple of years ago, and it's still holding in pretty good, so. I think we can prolong it long enough, uh, we, we've got some patching we'll do before this, just to get rid of some of the bad spots there. Um, but I think we can save the road long enough until we end up doing a sewer project. And it's gonna get televised this summer, uh, spring or summer, depending on. And if there is a bad section there, we have to dig it up, we, we lose, you know, a few square yards of con, of material, basically, so if we have to fix something. But I just, I don't think at this time we can financially take on this street project due next few years, so.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the low bid with Missouri Petroleum Products along with the additional work required for Munt. I'd love to say not to exceed ninety-four thousand dollars, but I'd better not. But you're gonna, you're gonna shoot it though, you're gonna shoot, you're gonna shoot the clay and the, the pipelines and stuff and.
We'll, we'll try to get it done beforehand, but if not, like I said, if we have to dig it up, we're only, we're only losing, you know, something. The rest of the street will still be taken care of.
Guess that should work, yeah. Okay, did okay, Theresa? Sufficient enough, or you want more rubbish?
Uh, it's okay. Basically, your motion is to approve the low bid from the, from Missouri Petroleum Products and add to the Munt Avenue project from Highway thirty eight.
Yeah.
To Forest, okay. I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Oh, John.
Okay, gotcha.
Discussion? None? Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Bremer?
Yes.
Yes.
And Monty?
Yes.
Thank you, and that's all I got in my report, unless somebody's got something to add.
Thank you, Greg.
Yep.
All right, move on to finance officer report, hunters couldn't be here tonight, um, we've got that little format packet. Any questions, or anything you've seen or reviewed in there, otherwise, Theresa, any highlights you wanna make sure you say on that one, or is there?
Does anybody have any questions about it?
All right, now we move on to city administrator report.
I just have a couple of quick, um, items on mine, just wanna let you know. Um, the third grade trees for our days, you know, we talked about putting in just a larger tree versus giving all the third grader ones, um. I sent an email to Brad Behrens saying that the city was good with that ideal as well. He's just checking with his superintendent to find a place for it, so as soon as we get the okay from them, then Craig can look into getting a tree for that, and we can move ahead with it. Um, I also contacted Sioux Falls, um, the landfill, and, um, they have an application process now to go through as far as requesting passes for the city. I think they, since we started doing it, they've had about three or four more cities start doing it, so, um, they sent me the application, I filled it out and sent it in, um, sounds like no problem with getting them again this year, so we're in the process of getting those. Just a quick update, planning and zoning, just Mitch had mentioned, we're still working on the subdivision regulations and design standards. Pretty much, um, just the technical standards is the last thing we have left to just review and get those finalized, and once, um, we do that, it sounds like in March we'll come back and do that, and have them ready and get that done. We just, the process then is to get the P and Z to approve it, we'd have a public hearing, then the, comes to city council for your approval and a public hearing. Um, and then I already kinda updated you on the, the right-of-way vacation, that piece of roadway we have by the park there, so that'll be on the next agenda as well, or we'll just go through that process, I guess, gotta go through planning and zoning first to vacate it, and then it comes to city council. Um, just made sure you're aware of it. And one last one that I didn't have, um, written up, I just wanna give you an update with Mickelson Road. We are going to have the mayor come and sign the documents on, uh, Friday morning, we, uh, got that coordinated with Rob and I, she's gonna bring in the stumpy agreements, that's the last ones we're waiting for, the signed documents of those, and she'll bring them Friday morning, and we'll have him s- sign them, plus all the other ones, so we should have everything buttoned down Friday morning.
Any media there?
Media there? You think we should, yeah, have a big hoop blow out, it's finally done. But yes, complaints, so, that's just a few updates I got.
Real quick, like, I, so I was surprised to hear over the weekend, uh, city maps, uh, you know, totally hear that Stockwell's currently updating city maps. Apparently, there's people out there that really covet those things, I mean, uh, uh, how would, how is the city map outside of having it hanging in our wall? Is, is it on the website, is it, is it, is it, is there a PDF that links to it? Because there's people out there that wanna know where this street is that they've never heard of before.
Um, well, you know, we went through the process with Stockwell last year to basically coordinate with the county's GIS system, and, um, we work with the county, that we are using their GIS system, so their mapping system, because theirs is more up to date, you know, it's constantly up to date versus we get a plat in and we wait for them to enter it in, two different systems working, so really, you, me, anybody can go on the county's GIS website, bring up Hartford, you can bring up Aerials, you can see where streets are, you can see who owns a property. That's all public information to the county.
Well, I figured there was something, I just didn't know where.
And so we've integrated their GIS system, and, you know, electronically with us, but with their updating and just kinda making sure all the information is correct, and, yeah, kidding, it's different.
Thank you.
We've got a few, a few address issues that aren't correct, and, you know, they're updating where our water and sewer systems are too.
Okay, and ETA on that, roughly speaking?
I think March, they have, um, Dan Renner working on it. You've been a lot, you're in March, yeah.
Well, we got, our guys working on it.
Yeah, they've got, they've got a gentleman in their office that is working on it.
Another guy, don't take it away from Martin, for God's sake.
I think he's gonna have them, or at least for you guys, review this as we get it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
All I got, right?
You have any question? All right, we're gonna move to old business, discuss sewer along North Vandemark Avenue. All right. And, I know with this with you, Theresa, you guys had some ideas, um, down here, I think you and Craig had talked a little bit about, about the sewer, what's going on with that, what the updates are with the landowner up there and all that.
Well, we talked about this at our last meeting about, um, running sewer from Ninth Street North to, to City Limits to, in order to, to get the new map development online, um, something they're gonna need, you know, eventually, is that sewer line in there. Um, we talked about, you know, it'd be ideal to get, you know, we have half a right-of-way in there, um, along the Hugo property there from Ninth Street North. And then it'd be ideal to get that right-of-way from Mr. Hugo and be able to put it right in there, but, and we're still pursuing that, but if worse comes to worse, we really don't need to have it, me and Craig thought, we talked to Mitch about this. You can jog the sewer over to the thirty-three feet that we do have, you know, we do have thirty-three feet of right-of-way in there, you could jog it over and run it up there if we couldn't get an easement or acquire that land for Mr. Hugo. So, you know, it is possible to do it without his right-of-way in there, an easement from him, so we just wanted the council to be aware of that. Definitely still gonna pursue it, I did talk to him, he came back, I think, last Tuesday, he got back from his thirty-day excursion, I called him on Thursday. Um, he will still talk with me, he, he didn't wanna talk right then and there that day, it was a little bit short, I, I think he was busy, he says he got my letter, he got my phone call. Um, he said, I'm just got a lot of stuff to go through now, and I don't have time to talk about this, he said, maybe in a couple of weeks, so I said, okay, I'll get over me in a couple of weeks and sit down and talk about it, I told him we really wanna nail this down and get, you know, figure out what it's gonna take to acquire that right-of-way from you, and so he did say he's open, but he wouldn't meet for me for at least a couple more weeks, so. So like I said, we'll still pursue that, and hopefully we'll get that, but if you guys do wanna move ahead with the sewer, I, I think it's possible, or we think it's possible to do it regardless.
You need a motion on that?
To, to go ahead with the sewer in Vandemark, oh, I think the whole council's gonna have to agree, it's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, it's true.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a large project, uh, the estimate was a hundred and fifty thousand, roughly, just.
Doug, what's your timeline again?
We'll start with the dirt, with the proposal, about to go.
Okay, and as far as, uh, water, sewer, I mean, because we're just talking, we're just talking sewer now, right?
Just to work.
There's water, there's water.
There's water, yeah.
There's water, yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, what do we need to know as far as?
Well, I would hope to sell some lots this summer.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to proceed with the construction, the, the write-up of, uh, the, uh, sewer line, okay, go ahead, Mitch.
I mean, well, we should get you a proposal to get us started on.
All right, just do that. Okay.
Just draft a proposal.
Draft a proposal on that, okay. Get the cart ahead of the horse, all right. So you don't need a motion on that then?
I, I, I think a motion to have the engineers draft a proposal for the sewer.
Proposal for creating sewer line, uh, within our right-of-way boundaries on Vandemark. Do we need to have a start at that point? No, just as good, all right.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
I'd like an open discussion. I'd like to read that back, Theresa.
Um, Nelson made a motion to have the engineers proceed with drafting a proposal for, to run sewer between, um, to run sewer on North Vandemark between Ninth Street and North to City Limits.
Ninth Street's the right connection point? Are you sure?
Yeah.
So we're gonna put it? But, that's where I'm confused, on the thirty-three.
Well, like Theresa was saying, we can, if we can't get the right-of-way there, it means that we'll be able to get it out by staying in our thirty-three feet, which means we have to snake the sewer a little bit. Um, at this stage, if you guys are eager to get started on that project, we should get going on our survey, and that's right, and at the same time, we can work on getting easements procured to, to hopefully put it down where we really wanna put it. Um, but if we, in the event we don't get those easements, there's a way to get it up there regardless.
How much of that survey that we paid for last year can be used for this project?
That survey is, is, is completely salvageable, so, that, we have all that complete inside, and we did a detailed survey, so we have all that information in the house. So you're right, we could actually go right into.
Just click and drag, and boom, here we go.
Wish it was that easy, but we can go right into design, moving for that, for this.
I tell you, I'm, I'm, I'm leery of giving up our leverage by snaking the sewer, you know, into our right-of-way. Property owner benefits from that improvement.
Yep.
So we certainly don't wanna impede this project, but I don't wanna give up our leverage.
Yeah. Well, and if you're thinking of doing the street, you definitely need a right-of-way for that, you have to have a portion of it.
Okay, so if we wanna do the street, but we don't have the right-of-way, so he says, nope, not giving it to you. Then?
Well, you can't do the street, or you could, um, basically use eminent domain to acquire the right-of-way that way. It's a little, it's a longer process and not real popular, but there is a way to get it, a resolution, a necessity.
Right, but he's a busy man, that's my concern. And we just spent how long on Mickelson with agreements and right-of-ways and construction easements, or whatever you wanna call them? So how do we, how do we, how do we come up with a plan of action that doesn't prevent another development? What's the, what's the common ground that we can get to, because I assume if we move the sewer, as you say, we wanna do the street, that changes things?
Uh, no, if we shift the land into sewer, we can still build a street without, we, with that adjustment in there. It's just to build the street, we have to own that property, because we'll be putting improvements on that side of the property.
I'd be curious, Travis, what leverage you think we have?
Well, you, to put, put the sewer in, makes his, his, his property currently doesn't have a sewer.
That's true. It technically does from, uh, cell, cell science, because cell, yeah, it's stubbed up to his property.
He's got a lot more sewer, he's got a lot more options, he's got a lot more flexibility, so it's a selling point for him.
I think our leverage will mainly come in with the street project, I mean, that's where the value. I mean, that's where the value of that property, I feel like, really increases with the street project.
I won't speak for Teresa or Craig, but this city's had more than one interaction with that gentleman. And this city never had any form of leverage with him. I would assume just because he doesn't care. That'd be my gut. I, I mean, in, in his world, in his world, I don't think that piece of land's even on the radar.
And that's why I'm motivated to make, make the motion. Um, Mark and I have been sitting here, we've heard this song and dance a thousand times. And, you know, two weeks from now, Duck has even experienced a little bit of a lag as far as any response back and stuff. You know, I mean, the reason I made this motion is because it, 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 I can't say it's promisable, but I, I think it'll just drag out and it'll be just like a Mickelson Road scenario. And, and that's why taking more of a proactive approach, I think, is, is proven in this gentleman's case. Because he has a long history of making it as hard as possible to make some, something like this happen.
So my fear is legit?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I haven't seen a plan, look. Like, where Part T connects to Vandemark, is there gonna be a road going into where the house was, basically? Okay, so I'm gonna go on the record that I have concerns with that. Basically being Part T becoming a main thoroughfare from Colton Road to the new development. And Part T is a narrow road now. So that is why I'm pushing, wanting to know and make sure if we can put a road that's paved and have sewer, so that this whole project works for the better of the whole area. So.
Part T and thirty-three feet?
The right-of-way probably is the.
I think.
Seven car, Part T, twenty-six.
But the dri, the driving surface is only like twenty-four.
Your part E on Part T?
One side.
On one side.
And that's if everybody follows Part E's signs.
Well, Part T is a totally different animal. We didn't talk about that so many.
Well, I don't, but still, wasn't involved in that.
I don't either, but.
Sounds good. That's a valid concern. If people are gonna choose which way to get there, pick the, the paved road, whatever possible.
If, if the council's truly concerned about it, why don't we make a motion for a proposal for this, for the sewer in the middle of the street and start forced condemnation right now? You want to talk about forcing hand, that's forcing hand.
Yeah. But then how do you pay it?
How do you what?
How do you get approval to pay it? Because you need, no, you force the con, you force, you force it.
Well, you, you can't pay it until you have the right-of-way. You can't have the right-of-way until he either gives it to you, you buy it, or you force condemnation.
Right.
And I'll tell you what, if you're waiting to buy it, and if you're waiting for it to get to you, there's gonna be people living in those, in those houses before that happens, in my humble opinion.
I think, I think we should try to work with him first, because he went through this and it cost him a pile of money for the land that they end up having to take over. Because it goes up to the, goes up for the judge, and he determines what it's worth. And they paid about four times what it's valued.
So, so what's the trade-off? You don't want to hold up development. If, if you know people in that development aren't gonna want to make a right-hand turn and go south on gravel, so they're gonna go through Part T.
Well, he hasn't said no yet.
All right, so my suggestion is, contact him in a couple of weeks, like he, you know, he just did give back. Made conversations with him before this. He, like I said, would never give me a number of what he wants for it, but he seemed open to the idea. I mean, he, he did say, you know, we talked about, he understands the benefit of getting, you know, it does make his land, you know, more valuable having a road in the street, you know, whether he, he develops it himself or whether he wants to sell it to somebody. So, you know, he understands that, and like I said, he hasn't shot it down. He just, you know, hasn't given a number and if I, you know, he knows this new development's coming in now. And I told him, you know, city's ready to move ahead with it. We, we need to answer one way or the other. So I think, you know, if you let, give me these couple, three weeks and see if I can meet with them and, and then proceed from there. I mean, my next meeting with me, he might just say, no, I don't think so, and then we know which way to go.
Is there any benefit to having the mayor and a couple of council members present?
Possibly. I don't, I don't know if he'll like the pressure, pressure the game enough. I mean, he's.
So what's the timeline look like, Mitch, if, we know it takes three or four months to bid Mickelson? I assume a project like this would have to go to bid.
Yes, you'd have to.
So by the time you design and go to bid, what type of timeframe are you looking at?
I mean, this is a, quite a smaller project, so if, uh, design and getting the construction plans together would probably take us two months on a project like this. It's a, we don't have any state money involved, so we don't have to go through those agencies either, so that, that's about two months.
This would probably be a good, a good project for the fall, because a lot of times contractors are looking for some small project in the fall. This is only a project for maybe three weeks. It's a short project.
Yeah, they don't do the development good.
Yeah.
Well, are you guys talking about the same thing? Are you talking about a road project or are you talking about sewer?
I'm just talking sewer project.
Right.
Yeah.
The easiest step.
Right.
So what I'm saying is that do you have two to three weeks until you hear back from them without affecting the development? I mean, are we on the tight timeframe?
Well, it's gonna take you two weeks to get a proposal to him before the next council meeting.
And another couple of months to design it before, we'd have some time.
You got a couple of weeks before you start building.
So you can bring back a proposal by the next meeting?
Yeah.
By then we'll talk to.
Hopefully by then we will have talked to him, hopefully.
I'll make a motion to amend my motion.
Hold on, which way are you gonna, what kind of proposal are you gonna do? Is it gonna be in the, assuming in the right-of-way or?
I mean, as far as, you know, our fees or anything, it doesn't matter to us where it ends up. It's all, it's all the same.
So you can put a proposal for each way?
Yeah, it'll be the same proposal whether we go up the center or off to the side.
I'll make a motion to amend my motion until the next council meeting.
To amend them bringing a draft to you?
We still need a proposal, Scott.
I think you're.
You're, you're still okay with that?
We're still, we still want that proposal.
I think you want them to do a proposal and bring it to you to your next meeting. And by then, hopefully we'll have some more information from Roger, Hugo, and then you guys can decide from there.
All right. I got one or a couple of words. I did talk, I did talk to Roger a couple of days before Teresa did. He's not in favor of the idea, but he thinks he's gonna have to cave on it. So I, when I talk to him, I do think it's a doable deal, whether it is or not.
He's not in favor of what idea?
Huh?
He's not in favor of what idea?
He's not in favor of putting sewer up the street, but he thinks he's gonna have to cave because of the development going in.
Probably felt the same way though.
I think he doesn't.
About what?
About asphalt or about.
I didn't get into asphalt.
I was gonna say, I, I think he's not in favor of getting assessed anything or putting out any money for that land. But I think he does understand that development needs to happen and.
We have heard that he's gonna turn it over to the son, whether he is or not.
I felt the same way about electricity, how you wire.
Yeah, how you wire. Water runs down here, so he'll get water. But that was my talk to him earlier than Teresa talked during, it was a little grumbly.
You ticked him off.
I really did try to. But my take is, he doesn't like it, but he's probably gonna go along with it. Whether it ends that way or not, I don't know.
So we should talk to the son, who's gonna inherit the land of more value?
Maybe?
All right, we have a motion to get a proposal here. Anybody need to hear that motion back?
Can I read it? Nelson made a motion to have the city engineers draft a proposal to run sewer on North Vandemark between Ninth Street and North to City Limits.
Okay.
Oh, second by Keel, sorry.
Okay. All right. Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Good deal. All right, on your new business, we got a list of surplus items. You see a burrow? Someone showing that big vandal being started. So, signs, all of that. Any questions on that list, Teresa's hearing your force?
I have a comment.
Yeah, which comment?
The, uh, what street signs are there, Craig?
The signs are, there's some old, uh, old actual street name signs, and then there's some, uh, some yield signs that are the wrong size. None of these, the signs are, all the signs are getting rid of or don't have the rectory reflectivity to them. So we're technically not supposed to put them up for an MUTCD. So that's, that's the, we went through, um, there was some detour signs, some older ones. We're gonna keep and put on barricade for like parades and stuff like that. So anything that we thought we could use. There's, I think there's a few stop signs there that, um, the school might be interested in at their parking lots, because they don't need to have the rectory reflectivity on them. So it might be something that, you like to buy the bus bar or something like that. It might be something to give to them.
The only reason I ask is because, you know, typically, typically a sign will have more value than it's weighted aluminum. And if you take it in for aluminum, whoever's running the place is gonna set them aside and sell them on the side for more than the price of aluminum. But in the grand scheme of things, I think that's the easier way to do it, and it's okay.
Yeah, and we talked about that when we had that big street project come through. And technically, they, they basically said the city should not be selling the signs to general public because if somebody ended up with a stop sign in there, and if the city sold it to them, they don't know if it got stolen or off a street sign, or off a sign somewhere. But you'd go to a secondhand store and find signs all day long. I mean, it just.
So, so if you sell them, if you're just selling for scrap of aluminum and liability, well, the city wouldn't have any liability.
Wouldn't have any liability with them, no. We're just, they'd be gone. And if they want to do whatever with them, that's their own issue then, so. Like I said, anything that we thought we could use for, without having it on a street sign, so on our own actual sign, we've kept them, but the rest of them are all gonna.
What, what's the deal with the tiller?
A tiller, that, we bought that back in, I guess, two thousand and one. We used to use it for fix and ditches and something like that, but now we use like skid steers and things that are not work.
What do you want to do with that?
Whatever you guys want to do with it. And I, I mean, we haven't used it. We tried to use it down at the, to fluff up the wood chips down at the park. Uh, we tried to do the sand in the volleyball court and that stuff to loosen that up, and it just doesn't work for us.
Is it a block behind?
No, it's a pull behind, um, thirty-six inch pull behind. It's an old agrafab, five horsepower. Like I said, we made, paid, uh, bought it for seven ninety-nine or whatever it was back then. It does need some work, I'll be able to say that. The motor runs, um, crankcase is leaking, and then the guards on the side are busted on and stuff like that, so. So we used it for doing.
There's really nothing else of value, is there? Forget, I, I would look at the list, but I didn't bring my glasses, so it wouldn't make any difference.
The stuff of the, the stuff of the sewer plant there, that is some, like, it's an old, there's an old scale down there. Some old centrifuges, just stuff that just has been sitting for, since two thousand and one. That Mueller tapping tool, I was gonna see if there's a tongue that still has some cast iron in, you know, which Sioux Falls does. But I've been here twenty-four years, never been unboxed. We've never used it.
As for tapping cast iron?
Yeah, it's, you'd, you'd actually drill it, and then there's a tap that go in to tap it, and you'd be able to. I've seen them in various situations, like on pictures and stuff, but I've never used it, so. I don't know if it's all there. I think it is. And so it's probably, if I had to throw a year on it, I'd say probably forty to fifty years old.
I'm gonna make a motion to surplus, the list of property at, uh, city superintendent and city administrator's discretion.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to billboard rates. This was put on from after the last meeting, the discussion about some of the billboard here. So. Teresa's got, her part of the packet there, a little bit more detail on which one's going to affect.
So the billboard advertising list, that's what, you know, was set by the council when I came in here. Basically, the east-based ones coming in to Hartford are a little bit of a cheaper rate, thinking Hartford Business is gonna rent them. And versus the ones going the other way, thinking, uh, Sioux Falls Business is gonna rent them, so they, those are a little more expensive. Um, we've always done three-year leases with, um, lighting from dusk to midnight. I do, we do have a couple of people that have, when they have come in and asked for a billboard, like, uh, B cup, asked for extended lighting on it, and we bumped their rate up a little bit to pay for that extra electricity and lighting for it. So it does vary a little bit, but this has been the base rate. And then, like I said, we varied it for lighting for them. And then now, after last meeting, we've done the two billboards at the one fifty for Blue Forty-two. So Mark Wan has put on the agenda, or the council did, to discuss, do we want to stick with these rates? Do we want to adjust these rates now? The, the second list is all our current renters. It does tell you, you know, when the renewal dates are. They do all have current contracts with us, so. This is up for discussion to see what the council thinks and what you could want to do, if you want to make adjustments.
Being an electrician, how much do we spend on maintaining the time clock that shuts them off at midnight? Should we just make them eliminate from dusk till dawn? Save some?
It'd be a lot easier to do it that way.
Because I drive by there and I never go, yeah, it's three in the morning, why is that light on?
Yeah, right now, they're all on.
Assume it's gonna be on.
Yeah, all the photo eyes have been taken out of them, and they're all on timers now. Just that, we just need to make sure we go with the change of the spring, fall. And then also, now that it's starting to get light, how early it was back in December, we need to start going down there like once every quarter and readjust the timers. We try to have them come on like a half an hour early, just to make sure they're on, you know, for that coverage time, so.
But we used to have photo eye. We went all to timers because we were having troubles with the photo eyes, but sometimes they were.
I think that was the council. To switch them on the timers.
We just switched them timers only a couple of years ago.
Yeah, it's about two, three years, two years probably.
Otherwise, they did have photo eyes on them before that time.
Here's my thought on paying for extra lighting. And I drive by at three in the morning, I see somebody who's not paying for extra lighting and theirs is on, I'm gonna be like, why am I paying for extra lighting? That guy's.
But they shouldn't be if we bet the timers set correctly.
That's my point, is, so then we spend money and resources to go fix something, where you say, you know what? Let's just eliminate them from dawn until dusk. Everybody gets the same thing. That's my thought. Save the, I'm trying to save the city money.
I can see that. All right, so on these rates, I'm looking at that. Last time, we made a change with one of the billboards out there. And, um, Mark, if I remember right, he said, hey, let's make sure we get this on there. So if we need to make them go to the rest of them out there, we're going to rate them at that.
The only thing I was, because at the last meeting, we made a deal, we made a better deal for, I believe it was Blue Forty-two, than everybody else has. And the reason I went along with that was because I was under the impression that we're just gonna make that the standard deal for everybody.
And what came out of that was, in order to do that, we need to make them agenda, come here, talk about it, make sure we get it in a minute.
Well, what I'm looking at is the current rates. It doesn't, there's nothing in here that reflects what we did.
No, these are the current rates, yeah. It doesn't reflect the, like I said, last meeting, Blue Forty-two. They're renting a full billboard now for a hundred and fifty a month, and our current rate is two hundred, if you look at the sheet.
So what do I need to do? Make a motion to? So what do I need to do? Make a motion to, to change the rate schedule for the be the west-facing billboards to mirror what we did at the last meeting? And then I guess see if the current tenants wanna sign a new lease? Well, it's the easiest way to do it.
I guess that's, I guess the council needs to decide how you wanna move forward with this, yeah, do you want a new rate schedule and have that in place from here going forward? Or do you wanna put a new rate schedule in place and have it adjusted for our current tenants as well?
I'd rather just put it in place and see if they wanna sign a new lease for, for whatever they have remaining on their holdings.
Going back to their same date.
Just a thought, this, I do budget, so the budget I proposed to you for revenue coming in for billboard, if we decrease it, it's gonna be less, you know, our revenues are gonna be less, so, just keep that in mind.
Isn't that offset by the fact that we get two more rented billboards?
Could be, yeah.
Who, who's all, Coffee Cup, Coffee Cup has a west-facing.
Super eight till September.
Has.
Yep. So, super eight is.
Super eight, the two for Blue Forty-two now, Coffee Cup. The hometown Christmas committee, there's one out there, we don't get any revenue off that.
The only two we'd have to propose it to would be Coffee Cup and Super eight.
Right. Yes.
Yes, cause they're west-facing.
Yeah, right. Cause we're not changing the east-facing, we're only, we're only looking at changing the west-facing.
And that's what I was wondering, are we changing, so we're just changing the west-facing?
I think just the west-facing, and as soon as the discussion last time was, part of that was because we were renting out billboards that we made a deal on it, because some of these had never been rented out, and that there were no revenue.
Turn them down.
So we're in Mexico, we're gonna tear it down.
Right, so.
I, I'd be looking for a motion to say, let's just extend that same deal to the other west-facing billboards, and any future rentals on west-facing billboards, and uh, let them come in signing a lease at the end of their term, and it's, I think it's right.
What's going on, Theresa?
He was just discussing, so then that would be cheaper for a Hartford business on an east-facing, I said, yeah, it would be, but I think you're discussing it because these are Hartford, because we're already past the exit.
They're Hartford residents, and we pay more than what the ones, other ones that aren't.
Well, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at this as a business owner and go, I knew what my costs were on the front end coming into it, and I was happy with that, and I signed a lease. Now, we made a special arrangement for Blue Forty-two on these others, guess what? That's business.
Supply and demand.
Supply and demand, you know.
There was an opportunity.
It's very generous of you to say, hey, we need to redo this for this business, because we did it for this business, but oh my goodness, what's that worth? You know, how much time are we spending on all of it? The premium signs are, are east-facing, I mean, that's legit, I mean, it's not like we're picking their pockets for those east-facing either. The west-facing is a business, as a Hartford business owner, about the one thing you can do is say, turn around, that's your next exit, you know? So nobody's gonna necessarily want those, and nobody's buying them at the prices that they're at now. Even Sioux Falls company.
I wanna muck up this just a little bit too, um, I've been approached by a person, business, so just keep this in, in mind for future reference in this discussion, um, to do a trade for billboard number one. They currently have a billboard by the Salem exit, and they would like to trade um, billboard number one for